We have our volunteers today.
Yay.
We got volunteers. Okay, we got like half a minute?
Yeah.
It is now seven o'clock PM and I'll call the meeting to order. May I please get a roll call?
All councilors are present. I'm Councilor Anderson.
Can everyone please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Item three is special orders of the day and announcements. Three A is proclamation honoring city of Beloit volunteers.
At this time, Vice President Forbeck will go to the podium and after she reads the proclamation, we'll have the volunteers to stand, we'll take a photo, and we will um uh kind of close down briefly and then we'll come back. But be sure you, our volunteers, take some refreshments with you before you go. So that's it. Vice President Forbeck, can you read the proclamation?
And I love proclamations that are fun and really meaningful. So here we go. Whereas dedicated community members serve the city of Beloit by volunteering their time and talents on various boards, commissions, and committees. And whereas a diverse representation of voices from throughout our community makes us stronger. And whereas these residents provide valuable input and contributions to help our city council make informed decisions about our parks, recreation, traffic, safety, economic growth, and much more. And whereas the Beloit City Council chooses to honor those who have served our community with pride throughout the year. Now therefore, the president of the Beloit City Council honors the many board, commission, and committee members who volunteer for the city of Beloit and encourages other interested residents to do the same in the new year, presented this 21st day of December 2022.
Here, here.
Yes. And if we could have okay, yep, and we'll get that date corrected, but if we could have all the volunteers, we're still on the air right now. Could we have all the volunteers come to the front, please? And we just want to celebrate all of you for your service, your hard work, and your dedication to our Beloit community to make our city of Beloit much better. Without you, I don't know what we would do. You are so valuable. And I think too often, we always say, well, we want volunteers, we want talented people. But we have talented people right here, right here in our wonderful Beloit community. So thank you for making our city much better. It would not be the same without all of you. There are some people that couldn't make it today. They called me, they're at home sick. But we want you to know that we say the same to you, that we are so happy and proud of you for the service that you give, so much time and energy. And sometimes people think that you gotta have a lot of money to give or to make a difference. But all you have to do is have the passion and the heart for our community, and that's what all of you have. So thank you for being here today. Let's give them all a hand. So if we could, you're so special. We're gonna turn around, but if each person could just say your first and last name. I know you don't have to give a speech. I just want you to say your first and last name. I'll say like I do my kids. Use your outside voice. So if you could just go around and just say your first and last name in the committee that you serve on, that'd be great.
Hi, my name is Ralfo Barca. I serve Mandarico Opportunity Commission.
Linda Overshaw, I'm on the board of Beloit Association.
Celestino Rafini, Laymark Commission.
John Kelker, somebody of Beloit Parks and Recreation Commission.
Parks Recreation Commission.
Kristen Lores, City of Beloit Parks and Recreation Commission.
Arden, Board of Review Board.
Carl Lang, Willbe, Parks Again.
Vincent Bruckoning, Board of Review.
Rich Walter, Downtown Beloit Association.
Lawrence Haley, Library Board.
Susan Adams, Board of Appeals.
Frank Schneider, Alcohol Beverage License Committee.
John Peterson, Board of Appeals.
Wow, so everybody, let's give them a hand. If everybody could just stand up and just give them a hand. I mean, this is a lot, it's a lot. Our city would not be the same without all of you. So what we'll do is, and we'll pause, we're gonna take a break at this time, but we're gonna take photos. So we're gonna pause to do that. Okay.
All right.
If we can come out, everybody.
Hand is ready.
My good side.
Everybody at home, send your good side now, girl.
Are you doing another one, ladies?
No refreshments before you walk.
See you later.
Thank you, everybody. And be sure to grab refreshments on your way out. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Yes. Yeah. Okay.
We don't get refreshments, Regina.
Yes.
We're not having refreshments.
We'll go ahead and get started.
Item four is public hearings. There are none. Item five is public comments.
Okay. We have reached the point on our agenda for residents to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. Council members may not act on any requests at this meeting, but may refer a speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you please hold your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. Public comment is a courtesy, and we expect everyone to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Speakers are asked to complete a public comment form. Madam Clerk, were there any public comment forms submitted prior to our meeting this evening?
Yes, there was. Tori Johnson, 2799 Cranston Road.
Okay. Tori, can you come up and just repeat your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, Tori Johnson. It's 2799 Cranston Road. On behalf of the Classic Cinemas Beloit Theater regarding the discussion of our first reading tonight. I just want to start with, we really appreciate you guys even discussing this amendment to hopefully consider, as I say, altering the code to allow G to R-rated films showing nudity so that we may be able to apply for a license. We are excited to hopefully be able to accommodate our guest wishes and understand that this is a new concept for Beloit and that it is a privilege to have a liquor license, and it's a privilege that Classic Cinema takes very seriously in all of the counties that we carry licenses. We currently have 13 licenses at various theaters, and with these licenses, we've had no violations or issues selling from the concession counter like we do. We offer continuous training for all of our staff in addition to the state requirements. We have read the Beloit's liquor code and are unable to find other entertainment industries that have such limitations like we're proposing for the movie theater industry. So I guess I'm here tonight to really just ask you to consider this when you're reviewing the proposed ordinance. We understand that this is not specific to just Classic Cinema, is that this ordinance would in fact affect any movie theater and any movie theater going forward in Beloit. But at our location, with our liquor licenses, we sell from the concession counter in a secure cooler. We have one selling area at the counter, and it's typically a manager who's doing the selling. Our customers spend a shorter time in the movie theaters compared to some other entertainment venues. In fact, they're usually in our building no more than two hours. If a customer comes to get a drink with only having the one selling area from concessions and with the limited amount of time our customers are in the building, it's very easy for us to recognize when we have repeat customers or a strange event or an encounter. And it is our policy, as I'm sure it's most companies, you know, if there is a doubt, you do not sell. I'd rather lose a sale than lose a license. I've, you know, too many locations to try to have any violations. We also sell in cans or in a designated cup and so that it's easily recognizable in an auditorium, a hallway, a theater. And if ever in doubt with our reserved seating, we can always question the person in that seat, asking them, you know, for their ID again, or asking to match it up with the tickets purchased if there's ever a concern. At times, customers want to purchase multiple drinks, and when we can clearly identify all the parties that are in that group over 21, we want to and we do sell. Again, currently, the way the code reads right now, any other entertainment business is able to do so. An example of this is the baseball stadium. A customer can purchase several drinks at different selling locations in the park and then return to their seat that has no identifying markers short of them holding a beverage. We bring this up because while selling alcoholic beverages at movie theaters is an idea that does fall in line with other entertainment venues, Beloit currently does not restrict those venues the way we're proposing in this ordinance. So I just ask that, you know, because of all of this, before you guys enact a new ordinance that will affect us and any other theaters, you consider all of the entertainment and how they are very similar and all face issues and worries of underage drinking, overdrinking, et cetera. There are many, okay. So we hope that you consider that other entertainment that Beloit offers and how their code is structured. There are more expectations to maintain a safe and friendly environment through the training policies and procedures of each establishment versus from Beloit limiting the liquor code. We ask that you consider removing the language pertaining to movie theaters, specifically wristbands and stickers. Because we sell in different cups and cans, it is already clearly identified in the auditoriums. And if it should be that you feel the identification needs to stay, we would hope or prefer that maybe we could limit it to just the wristbands, as once they're attached, it's not easily removable like a sticker could be. We also hope to be able to sell from concessions. It's a discreet area. It's one cooler on the counter with a limited selection. And then, again, this is only sold by our 18 and up trained, fully trained staff that will get continuous training. And lastly, we ask you to consider the one-drink minimum. We do watch and monitor this, and we will not sell if there are concerns. But our customers would like the ease of being able to get their drinks and not have to leave the theater again. Similar to somebody at a baseball game not wanting to miss an inning, no one wants to miss any of the movie. So in the end, I just want you guys to know and I guess understand, while it's a new concept for Beloit as an industry standard, I say this is common practice now. The movie theaters are changing. Offering an adult beverage is becoming a standard option when you go to a show. Our two biggest competitors, Janesville and Machesney Park, are already selling alcohol. And this request to change the code originally so we could get the license was not a push for us to turn into a bar or make beer a priority. In fact, it's a blip on the products we sell and what we offer. Movies and popcorn will always be our mainstay. This is just us hoping to offer the amenities that keeps us current in our field and brings the customers back to Beloit. At the end of the day, movie theaters offer the same product, newly released films. And it's the amenities that each theater provides that sets them apart. We just ask that this ordinance be created to make it feasible for theaters to sell alcohol to the guests the same way other entertainment industries can already do so in Beloit. We know that this is a privilege and an honor to even be considered to hold a liquor license. And so I, again, I just thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. Were there any public comment forms submitted prior? Okay. Are there any members of the public that did not sign up who wish to address the council this evening? Can you please say your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, I'm Debbie Fisher with Youth to Youth for Change. The address is 416 College Street, Beloit. I came here to really say that I'm proud of the Beloit City Council for the restrictions that you did set for this. We know that alcohol is gonna be a part of theaters. It's a nationwide thing. But you guys took a second step to make sure that our youth are not gonna be able to get alcohol. So by having a wristband, the cup maybe not, but at least a wristband to prove that the person that is consuming the alcohol is 21 or over. And then I'm really concerned about more than one drink in a two- to three-hour period because alcohol, we don't want over saturation. The movie theater in the past has had a few problems, not with adults so much, but but we don't want to have overconsumption of alcohol in that movie theater. Movies are a family event. They're different than a baseball field. And it's an enclosed area where families are coming to see a movie. So overconsumption of alcohol isn't necessary. We're not fighting that alcohol shouldn't be there. We're not fighting at all, really. But we're just saying we're really proud of the restrictions that the city council did. And you don't have to be like every other community. You can be different, and I'm proud of you that you are. The other thing I want to offer to Classic Cinema is we have ID checkers, and so they wouldn't have to look at an ID for the age. We have a checker that will check the IDs right away and let them know if they're over 21 or not. So we're happy to work with them, but also we're very proud of the city council for what you put into motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening who didn't sign up, come forward at this time? Madam Clerk, were there any public comments submitted by email?
There was not.
Okay. Public comment is now closed.
Item six is consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Would any counselor like anything removed from the consent agenda?
Yes, I would.
Which item would you like removed?
I would like item 6B removed from the consent agenda.
Okay. Counselor Blakely would like to have 6B removed. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including items 6A and 6C through 6J? Is there a motion?
I saw move.
Moved by Vice President Forbeck. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Blakely. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Item 6B.
A spring election will take place in the city of Beloit on February 21st, 2023. It's likely that only one contest will be on the ballot in Beloit, just the justice of the Supreme Court. In past elections with only one contest on the ballot, extremely low voter turnout is to be expected. Because of this, we are asking that we change from the nine polling locations to two. One on the west side to be held at the Beloit Historical Society, and one on the east side at Central Christian Church. And all absentee ballots will still be processed at the city hall using one machine. I'll be happy to answer any more questions.
Thank you, Marcy. And just for clarification, that was 6B, Considered Resolution 2022-209 with the combining polling places for February 21st, 2023 for the spring primary election. So we'll have further discussion, but first, may I please have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Blakely. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Forbeck. Are there any questions or discussion? And I believe Vice President Forbeck.
Marcy, could I ask you, hon, this is usual procedure, right? I mean, we had some
Done it every year since 2013.
Her microphone's off.
Can you, your microphone's off, Vice President Forbeck.
Oh, wow.
Okay, were there any further discussions or questions?
Madam President. Yep. I just wanted to command our hardworking and very organized Clerk-Treasurer's Office under the leadership of Marcy Granger. And this indeed is the appropriate number of polling places for a small election like this. Important to the candidates who will be running for the one position of Wisconsin Supreme Court Justice. So I still urge other people to vote, and we'll be mentioning that before that election rolls around. But thanks again for the great job you do, Marcy. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Blakely. Are there any other councilors with comments or questions? Okay. At this time, we have a mo, did we do the motion? Wait. May I please, did we have the motion?
We had a motion from me and a second from
We had a motion and a second. So at this time, there's a motion and a second to approve this resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Item seven is licenses. 7A is Consider An Application For A New Class B Intoxicating Liquor License And A New Class B Fermented Mouth Beverage Beer License For OOG Prairie Street LLC Doing Businesses Jerry's Bar and Grill Located At 2745 Prairie Avenue, Beloit.
At this time, our City Clerk-Treasurer, Marcy Granger, will present.
OOG Prairie Street LLC Doing Businesses Jerry's Bar and Grill Is Applying For A New Class B Intoxicating Liquor License And A New Class B Fermented Mouth Beverage Beer License Period Ending June 30th, 2023. The ABLCC reviewed the application at their December 13th, 2022 regular meeting to assure conformity with existing rules, regulations, and zoning ordinance of the city and state, and made a recommendation to the council to approve the license five to zero.
Thank you. May I please have a motion to approve the resolution?
I saw move.
Moved by Vice President Forbeck. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Terrio. Are there any questions or discussion? At this time, there's a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Item eight is ordinances. 8A is Consideration Of Ordinance Number 3769 Amending The Future Land Use Plan Of The City's Comprehensive Plan From Single Family Residential Urban To Plan Mixed Use For The Property Located At 825 Liberty Avenue. Second reading.
Okay, this is a second reading of this ordinance. May I please have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented?
I saw move.
Moved by Vice President Forbeck. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Day. Are there any questions or discussion? At this time, there's a motion to approve the ordinance as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Item 8B is Consideration Of Ordinance Number 3763 Approving An Amendment To The Zoning District Map From Public Lands And Institutions District To Public Unit, excuse me, Planned Unit Development District For The Property Located At 825 Liberty Avenue. Second reading.
This is a second reading of an ordinance. May I please have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented? Is there a motion?
I saw move.
Moved by Vice President Forbeck. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Day. Are there any questions or discussion? At this time, we have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Item 8C is Consideration Of Ordinance Number 3773 To amend Sections 1.76 Sub 5 Sub D And 1.76 Sub 7 Sub A Of The Code Of General Ordinances Of The City Of Beloit Pertaining To The Board Of Review.
Attorney Krieger will present at this time.
Thank you. This is a fairly routine matter. We just have to update our code to stay consistent with the state law. There have been a couple of changes in this area, and so we're just making sure that our municipal code is up to date in that regard. So I stand ready to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Attorney Krieger. This is a first reading of this ordinance. Is there a motion to lay the ordinance over for a second reading?
I saw move.
Moved by Vice President Forbeck. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Counselor Blakely. Are there any questions or discussion? And I just wanted to remind everybody, this is an update to keep us current with our state law. So at this time, there's a motion and a second to lay the ordinance over for a second reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
8D is Consideration Of Ordinance Number 3765 To amend Section 31.14 Sub 3 And 31.30 Sub 1 And To Create Section 31.28 Of The Code Of The General Ordinances Of The City Of Beloit Pertaining To Nudity Prohibited In Licensed Establishments In Movie Theater Licensee Requirements And Restrictions.
Attorney Krieger will present at this time.
Thank you. In 2011, the state of Wisconsin authorized movie theaters the opportunity to obtain licenses to sell alcoholic beverages. Classic Cinema in Beloit is interested in obtaining said license. However, there is a city ordinance that prohibits businesses that are licensed to sell alcohol from displaying movies that contain nudity. Classic Cinema approached the city of Beloit with a request to amend the city's current ordinance that prohibits that. City staff was also asked to take a look at the conditions and restrictions on alcohol licenses in movie theaters and prepare to draft ordinance for your consideration. Section 1 of the ordinance does address that issue with the exception, allowing movie theaters who display G, PG, PG-13 and R-related movies, and also any temporary display of those movies to be exempt from that requirement of code. So this would address any movies where they're in licensed establishments for like BIF, for example. So they would not be in violation of that code. Section 2 of the ordinance contains a set of regulatory system for movie theater operators that also obtain an alcohol beverage license in the city of Beloit. The purpose of this section is to guard against underage drinking and over-serving alcohol to patrons. The research that was done was to take a look at Janesville and also Machesney Park, as well as other movie theaters across the state. Many cities have looked at a regulatory system of putting conditions on an alcohol license. In this route, I'm recommending that you put those things in an ordinance to help with enforcement if there are any issues at the theater that those can be addressed very swiftly and cleanly. The first section talks about a movie theater licensee providing adequate security measures to properly police and enforce the possession, sale, and consumption of alcohol on the licensed premise. Such security measures include proper lighting, proper identification of those who are eligible to be served alcohol, and proper training for staff and management. The draft ordinance also requires an operational plan be submitted when anyone is submitting for an alcohol beverage license. The draft ordinance limits the sale of alcohol to one drink be served to one person at one time. It requires no seating in bar service areas, and the consumption should occur in the auditoriums. The draft ordinance requires food service be available during times when alcohol is available. It also requires alcohol beverages be sold in single servings, so no pitchers, no buckets of alcohol may be sold. The ordinance requires wristbands for all customers purchasing and consuming alcohol beverages, and that such wristbands be worn and visible while consuming those beverages. The ordinance also requires distinct containers be used for alcohol beverages with stickers affixed that indicate that the age has been verified of that patron. The ordinance finally requires that signs be posted throughout the licensed premise that informs customers of the regulations related to alcohol beverages and that the location itself must actively monitor to ensure that regulations are followed. Section 3 of the ordinance does provide a penalty for violating that ordinance. The ABLCC did review this ordinance at its regular meeting last week Tuesday. They are recommending that the council consider two additional possible changes. One, separating seating locations within theaters to require areas where alcohol will be allowed and where alcohol will not be allowed. Two, setting a limitation on the size of drinks sold. Suggestions were made to include language that the size of the alcohol beverages sold shall not exceed 24 ounces. Those changes were not made to the draft ordinance, but those are available for your consideration and discussion this evening. And then I believe you heard earlier during the public hearing from the cinema itself regarding its request that you consider several changes to the ordinance itself. With that, I stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
And perhaps we'll have those in discussion. We'll go ahead and take the motion on that item first. This is the first reading of the ordinance. Is there a motion to lay the ordinance over for a second reading?
I so move.
Moved by Vice President Forbeck. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Terrell. Now we'll take questions or discussion. Let's begin with-
I have a question.
Okay. We'll go with Vice Pres- I mean, we'll go with Counselor Blakely, and then we'll go to Counselor Levy.
Okay, thank you. Madam interim City Manager, Deff, the items that you just announced that are not part of the draft ordinance, do we need to deliberately include them before we vote to move the whole thing forward, to lay it over, rather? Or can they wait until we have that full presentation and voting?
Sure, that's a great question. If there's any discussion here today that indicates that there's a consensus of the council that would like to see any change, I'd ask that you voice those conversations today, and we could prepare a substitute amendment to the ordinance that would be considered at the second reading. So if we get a sense that a majority of you are interested in seeing one or two things changed with the draft ordinance, speak up. We can figure out if there's a consensus, and we can make that change for the next meeting.
Thank you. Counselor Levy.
Thank you. Just a few questions. And I'll start, and maybe it goes to the city attorney, and then if we need the cinema to answer, I'll leave that to your discretion. I guess my struggle is with the monitoring of individuals that's coming in. Yeah, we're gonna have a wristband, but I'm still struggling with the fact that we're located right by this highway. I'm not comfortable in saying that. I need to know how many drinks can an individual have? So if I have the wristband, can I go back and drink as many beers as I want to in the timeframe of my movie that I'm watching? Because if so, that's a concern to me. I know we're monitoring the age piece of people drinking, but I guess I'm more curious than saying, is it an unlimited supply that the individual can have? Who's gonna be monitoring to see if this person is even remotely intoxicated? Because I would hate for someone to go to the show, watch a movie, do a lot of drinking, get pulled out of parking lot, and now they get arrested for a DUI. I'm really struggling with this. So the monitoring-
If I could address that, then I won't lose that question. So I just want to remind everyone, the ordinance tonight is just for any movie theater that would be operating in the city, and that Classic Cinema may have an approach that's different from a movie theater. But involving over-serving of individuals, there is still a state law, and I didn't get into depth with it because it is a function of that state law, that you can't serve already an intoxicated person. So the same restrictions that would stop a bartender from over-serving a patron at the bar or a waitress or waiter from serving at a restaurant would still be in place in the movie theater. So they still have an obligation to make sure they're not over-serving individuals. And that is, they accomplish that training through the state course that you have to take, and then also just from daily monitoring and observing people.
I hear you. Not comfortable. So i- is it okay if I ask? Is it okay, Madam President?
Do you feel comfortable with that right now? Because you didn't plan to do this tonight. I don't know if someone could answer that question. Okay, can you come to the mic and state your name again and your address for the record?
Tori Johnson, 2799 Cranston Road, Beloit Theater. I guess, you know, to answer it kind of bluntly, and I don't mean it to sound rude, but any establishment, regardless of being in there an hour, two hours, 10 hours, you can be over-served. So that's part of our training, that's part of the state training already, and then initially our training. It's, you know, the staff is trained at our theaters, as I'm sure they're trained at a bar, the restaurants, bowling alleys, I mean, everywhere. That if you have any concerns, you're seeing signs, I call it, you know, the warning signs, the danger zones. If you're seeing that you don't serve to them, you know, you offer them a water, you keeping a closer eye on them. If somebody comes in intoxicated, you would never serve to them. You know, those are all the same policies that are already in Beloit's liquor code as part of the state requirements. And that's what, you know, we're trying to explain is, you know, it is a unique environment, it is different. But at some point, having a beer while you're bowling was a unique environment. Having a beer at a baseball game was a new environment. All of these are family establishments. All of these have kids, underage and overage, and they're all going to offer limitations. And right now, Beloit does not put any limitation in any other restaurant, bar, entertainment outside of the traditional code. And as a theater, talking with other theaters, having, you know, I say Janesville and Machesney Park with some of the limitations they have, it's not practical to even offer the alcohol, which in turn ultimately hurts your business and sends your customer elsewhere. And so it's really just us trying to stay current with the amenities that, I don't mean a blanket statement, but everybody's offering alcohol at almost every theater and every establishment, you know, that's an amenity parents want when they go and see a movie with their kids. It's an amenity a grandparent might want when they go bowling. Like, it's regardless, it's already in place in our liquor code in Beloit.
Understandable.
Do you have any other questions, Counselor Levy?
Yeah, just one more. So- So, because we're both blunt people, so just let me ask this question.
Yeah.
So let's say you don't get it. Are you gonna be out of business in a year? Is how, because-
If we-
But we, I mean, because what we hear so often is when people come forward and they try to get alcohol, they want to get beer, and the first thing they say is, if I don't get this, this is gonna hurt my business, and I could probably be out of business in three to five years. We hear that all the time. Three to five years, you go buy the business, they're still around. So we hear that, so I'm always pushing back on saying, okay, yeah, but you've been successful so far up to this point. If you don't get it, how much, how effective is that gonna hurt your business?
No, and it's an honest question. And in a year's time, am I gonna notice it? Of course not. It's, you know, a year. We're late to the game already, you know? We have the nice recliner seats, we show the new movies, we have great customer service, we have all of that. But especially in the theater industry, you're limited by the product you're allowed to play from Hollywood. So a baseball game, you might go there because you are a fan of that team, and that's who you want to root for. So that stadium could be state of the art, or it could be terrible, and you wouldn't care because you want to be there for that team. And in turn, you're gonna drink their beer and eat their food and cheer on their team. But in a movie industry, you can see the same exact show at any theater you feel like. So Janesville has alcohol, Machesney Park has alcohol. We're slowly getting all of our locations in Illinois licenses because the trend is everyone's going to the alcohol, not because it's going to make or break your business and close you down, but because you will lose customers that want that amenity if you don't offer it. And that's the concern we have with Beloit. Especially, and I hate to bring it up, but post-COVID, it's a very difficult industry for the theaters, a lot of entertainment in general. And currently with the proposed code, we would have a difficult time, I guess, is the easiest way to say, enforcing it all between, you know, the training we already have in place to prevent all of the concerns. Most of this would not, you know, it doesn't make me worry. I have no issues if we need to limit ounces, I have no concerns. But if you go to a baseball field and your husband or wife wants to buy you a drink, they can do that right now. And if you came up and your wife was walking into the show and I saw her, I would sell you two drinks because clearly you're old enough. When we have, like, no offense, but when you come up with your wife, like, I would ask for both IDs because I don't know. And that's where currently the Beloit code allows that discretion at the entertainment level, at the management level, at the company policies, not specifically written down. We've had other theaters that, or towns, that said, no, one drink, that's it. And then they started getting more complaints from the town that said, you know, I want to buy my wife a drink, and these people won't let me. She has to get out of the theater, miss her show, and, well, you know, it really upsets them. And so what they did is then amended the code because they too understood how diligent we are. That I don't have any violations. I mean, I'm gonna knock on wood. That's, but it is something we take very seriously.
Can I just do one final comment?
Go ahead, Counselor Levy, then we'll go on to the next council.
So, first of all, I like what you've done out there. It's great. And then the other piece is, is I guess why I'm doing a little bit pushback, because we have worked so hard to get where we are. That's why a lot of times when people come before council and want some alcohol, we kind of push back really hard because we work hard to get where we are. So I, you know, I was kind of encouraged a little bit when, you know, Deff got up and said, you know what? We really don't have a problem with what they're proposing. So I'm like, okay, because we have people that fought to get Beloit where it is with the alcohol and stuff, and we just don't want to-
Well, it's a great town, and we have come in, you know, did all the conversions, if you will, put the seats in, the lasers, you know, everything to stay current. And we've improved attendance from when it was the previous owner. We want to keep doing that. We want to improve that. And the concern or fear is, are we going to be able to, if we can't continuously stay with the movie trends, offer the amenities that they're wanting and asking for? You know, the same thing, flip it around. If the baseball field was restricted to one drink per person, a wristband, a sticker, identifiable cup, they would not have the sales they have, and they would maybe not consider this town at that point. And so I'm just asking that you consider the long-term effects of any theater in this town and continuously improving the attendance and keeping, I say, your townsman and the surrounding towns in Beloit.
Thank you for that. But just a second, I know we had a couple of councilors that had some other, some things to add to this conversation. However, Attorney Krieger, can you please give us some clarification?
Yeah, I just want to point out that the restrictions that are in the draft ordinance were taken from the conditions put on licenses in Janesville. So it's not like they're unique in the conditions that you're looking at. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
That is the conditions, for an example, the wristbands.
The wristbands, the cups, the stickers. All of that is the condition of the license in Janesville.
Thank you. And a couple other councilors had questions. We'll start with Counselor Terrell, and then we'll go with Day, and then Vice President Forbeck.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, President. I would speak on my personal experience of going to this movie theater at least twice a month. It's highly security enforced. It's security there, especially on the weekends. I don't think, with all honesty, that anybody is looking to go to a movie theater to get drunk. People are going in to have a good time and just, you know, come out with a good experience. This movie theater offers state-of-the-art movie-going experiences for regular working-class citizens that we all speak on in the city of Beloit. It's very affordable. It's some spots in Beloit that if you go to and want to have a state-of-the-art experience, you know, it's a little bit more costly. With the surrounding areas, like, I could say right now, raise my hand, I'm guilty of it. I've had to leave Beloit at one time to go to Schaumburg or Sun Prairie to enjoy the experience up there. And the same experience up there is the experience that they just brought to this movie theater here in Beloit. And again, it's affordable, and it's keeping business here in the city of Beloit, keeping residents here in the city of Beloit as well. I've met people from, like, Rockford and the other surrounding areas who have come to the movie theater to enjoy the experience because this movie theater here in our city is offering good product to the people, you know, regardless of, you know, Beloit residents or not. And another thing that I want to put in there is that we have a casino near the highway as well, and we're giving them Class A alcohol, like, I mean, liquor and beer. So I think people would be more at risk of, you know, gambling addiction or alcohol addiction going to a casino versus a movie theater, to be honest. And as I said, you know, going to this movie theater myself, like, I've had nothing but good experiences, good people that work there. You know, security, very friendly security. I haven't seen any kind of, like, you know, drama with the adults or anything. You know, you got kids, kids be kids, you know, they come in there and just, you know, act up or whatnot. But, you know, of course, that's what the security is there for. And like I say, you know, with them coming forward asking just to sell beer, I mean, with the good business that they're doing, I mean, I would spend, take a date and spend $40 at the movie theater here in Beloit versus going to Schaumburg or Sun Prairie or Machesney and spending about $80, you know? So we gotta recognize that it is people in the city that are trying to offer good product and good experiences to our residents, and they're keeping it affordable for our people. So for them to want to just sell beer, I don't see any reason why, you know, to supplement, you know, the affordable prices that they're giving us here in the city. I just think it just, you know, especially given that Janesville is doing the same thing and other surrounding areas, I don't see why that would be an issue at all. So I just wanted to leave it there. And again, nothing but good experiences at this movie theater. I have nothing bad to say about it. And thank you for your business here in the city of Beloit. A lot of people really appreciate it, and I haven't ran into a single person that had any bad experience with the new updated movie theater.
Yeah, we have no plans of leaving Beloit.
I hope not.
We're very honest, family-friendly. I've worked for the company almost 21 years.
Yes, and those recliner seats, love them, everything, state-of-the-art. Like I said, in the surrounding areas, you don't see that. We have it right here in Beloit, and they're doing good business here in Beloit, and I respect that. Our working-class people respect that too as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Terrell. Now we'll go to Counselor Day.
All right, thank you. I'd like to focus on what's written here in front of us, some of the recommendations, and just get your response in there. There's two of them here that the committee recommended, and it was separate seating locations within the theater. Is that something that you want to consider?
I'll be honest, if that is put into the ordinance, we will not be able to sell alcohol. We came to Beloit, cut our seating about 50% to put in the recliner seats. We now offer reserved seating, so you have to pre-purchase your ticket, or when you buy it at the counter, it's linked to your credit card, your cash, you know, however it comes out. And limiting a portion of a theater, especially, you know, you do five, six showtimes a day in that auditorium, and putting, let's say, a quarter of it to people over 21, you're limiting even more on the seats. And like I said, this is a supplement. We are not, you know, I sell more ICs per person, like, per total than I do alcohol. It's not a business of becoming, you know, alcoholics and promoting drinking. That is not. Most people get one or two drinks. The other issue is, you know, people do come with their family and their kids. And so if you're seeing, and I have three kids under seven, you know, if we go to the show and I'm in a PG- you know, if we go to the show and I'm in a PG movie and I want to have a glass of wine, if I'm limited to the 21 section, I can't go and do that at this theater then because I can't sit with my kids if they're not next to me. You know, I can't leave the three-year-old alone. Um, so it would be very difficult. And if that would get added at this point, we know it, we would not feasibly be able to sustain that. We'd lose too many seating opportunities when we have sellouts and those seats might not sell. Um, yeah.
I think, I think you're, you're right because it, it not only pertains, we're talking about the classic cinema, we're talking about like BIF. We had that discussion here earlier, so I, I think that's a fine response. And, you know, I would recommend that we do not include that in this. And then the second one that's here is the limit for the 24 ounces, which I think you said you're fine with that.
Yeah, I have no issues.
I think that's a good, good policy to have.
We don't currently sell anything over 24. We, um, and everything we sell is pre-mixed in a can. You know, again, we're not in the business of wanting to throw a big bar in.
Right.
Um, we just want to be able to compete with the theaters that have thrown a bar in, um, and keep you here.
So and there's five other things here that I think, it said that you were at the meeting here and you suggested these, which I would also agree with the five. And we didn't read those, but one of them was increasing the minimum drink maximum to two drinks. The second one was remove the sticker requirement. The third was allow people to consume alcohol in areas other than the movie theaters.
Yeah, consume on premises.
On the premises.
And no loitering. But if a customer comes and they have 10 minutes till their film, I would hate to say, you know what, I'm going to open it because legally I have to open my container that I'm going to serve you, but you cannot drink that till you're sitting in your seat.
And premises is not on the property, it's within the building.
It's within the building, absolutely.
So number four was remove and require that alcohol be sold from separate or discreet area of the theater. You want to serve it at the counter, like every?
We do, and that in itself is discreet because it's not screaming a big bar.
Right.
Um, we do a cooler. Um, again, with staffing and how we kind of multitask and post-COVID being well-aware of our numbers, it would not be feasible to
Yeah.
position a cooler in its own area and then have only that one person able to sell.
I think it's, it's hard because if one person wants to buy a beer out of the 100, you're going to have somebody standing there waiting for that one person. It doesn't make sense.
No, the majority of your shows will not have any alcohol.
Right.
Um, but you know, the big Blackbusters, the Avenger movies come out, things like that, and there's more of an interest.
So and the other, the fifth one here is allow alcohol to be sold by the can rather than, um, in distinct containers.
Either or, I guess, is what we do now. And we don't sell anything in cans. Um, so even if the code read in, you know, a different, I think a lot of our codes right now at other theaters read like a different cup or a different container
Identifiable container.
than what you currently serve your soda in, which we already do. And again, that's because of training. I would never want to have to try to figure out who has what in their classic cinema cup. And that's why we do that.
So I would suggest to the council that we consider what we just talked about here, if that's okay.
Okay.
All right, that's, that's it. Thank you.
That was wonderful input. I thank you. We appreciate that, Counselor Day. Next, um, Vice President Forbeck.
I just have a comment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I have to admit that it's just sort of new for me, um, to be thinking about having a drink. Um, and, uh, I, I want to go back to a time a while ago that when there was the first ordinance about being able to allow outdoor dining and being able to have a drink if you sat outside, um, at some of our restaurants. Um, I just recall the conversation was, to me, unbelievable. Uh, people acted as though people in Beloit weren't even human, like they would be sitting outside and have an overwhelming desire to throw their glass, wine glass on the sidewalk when, dear Lord, for decades, all of Europe and all of our big cities were allowing that. So I'm, I'm trying to tell myself I don't want to be like that conversation that took place about, I don't know, 15 or 20 years or maybe more, hell, here. Um, and I think that this is, we're laying this over. So I think all of us want to just think about this. And I just want to assure you that we all love our movie theater.
And I appreciate that. And that's, I just, I want the consideration before we just quickly boldly make a decision that affects, I say, the town and any theater or business going forward.
Sure, right. And so I think that that's, we'll, we'll need this maybe two weeks to, to consider this. And I, I probably maybe will even go check out some of those, uh, not, uh, Janesville and Machesney and just, you know.
Yeah, and I will say they have more of an elaborate, I, I guess you'd say, bar concept than classic cinemas does. Um, but also talking with some of them, selling liquor or having it available, I say during all of your shows or every day has been difficult because of the restrictions their towns have put on them. I think it's Machesney Park, um, was talking with one of our owners and kind of said it's, it's not worth it if there's so much limitation. Um, and so that's weighing their experience because of their code and then reading the rest of the Beloit code that you guys do and trust so much into your businesses to follow the rules, train their staff, you know? You, you know, we hope that, I guess, you can entrust us with that as well.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And what has just occurred to me, I want to say to my fellow counselors, is that if we're talking about allowing only one drink at a time, um, which I have to say at first, I just thought, well, sure, that's great. But when I'm thinking now of the BIF, uh, I mean, certainly my husband, if we were at a BIF movie someplace and went to get a drink, um, I would have been irritated at him if he'd come back and said,
You have to go?
I couldn't get you one. Um, and, and that's what we would be saying if we said this. So anyway, we've got a lot to think about.
Yes, no, I understand.
And I think you've verbalized very well for our information.
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and I just want to add that we appreciate your business here. We appreciate, y'all see Tori's here, Eric's here. We appreciate you being here. Um, Deb's here, she came and spoke tonight. But I just want to thank our staff for working to do the comparables with Janesville and the other areas because if you read the report, they did a lot of work and they compared that.
Of course.
So we have a lot to think about. And then as far as the enforcement code, I just want to reiterate, I know Deb was here and she talked about working. And you talked about having, um, issues with enforcing the code and that being a challenge. And I know she had mentioned something about the counter. I think you talked about the ticker or something or counter.
Yeah, and so, yeah. And so I think that's a very good point and because you talk about having challenges with that. So just something to think about. But I heard, uh, I'm sure the council, we've heard both sides and
Yeah, no, thank you.
how everybody feel about it. So, um, at this time, um, and again, thank you for coming up because you didn't know. So everybody listening and looking,
No, no, I appreciate it.
you didn't know what the questions were going to be. You just answered. And so thank you for that.
Yes, thank you.
But thank you so much.
No, thank you, guys.
Okay, so at this time, there's a motion and a second to lay this ordinance over for a second reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Item nine is appointments. The individuals named below have been nominated for a seat on the City Board Committee or Commission. Each nomination is subject to confirmation by the City Council. Approval of appointment will be accomplished by one motion unless a council member requests to take up a nomination separately, in which event the nomination will be removed from the General Order of Business and considered at this point on the agenda.
May I please have a motion to approve the appointments as presented?
I so move.
Move by Vice President Forbeck. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Terrell. Are there any questions or discussion at this time?
I would just like, Madam President, I'd just like to thank the people who are volunteering for positions. We always need good volunteers here in Beloit. And we saw from earlier how wonderful our group of volunteers is. Thank you.
Yes, thank you as well.
Thank you very much. And we just recognized volunteers, as you said, tonight. So we're always looking for talented people to put their skills to good use. At this time, we have a motion and a second to approve these appointments. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Item ten is counselor activities in upcoming events.
At this time, we will start with Counselor Day.
Thank you. I have nothing for tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Terrell.
Thank you, President Duncan. Uh, I just wanted to talk about our Pathways to Home Ownership, uh, event that we did at Merrill, um, last Wednesday. We had a very good turnout. Um, we had a lot of people with concerns about housing that came out and, um, wasn't aware of some of the city programs that were being offered and, and some of the supplemental help that some of us, uh, here at the city, are, the people that we're partnered with and spoke highly about, uh, being Ax Housing, um, Beloit Neighbor Works and as well as, uh, Community Action who came in and spoke to residents about, uh, some of the programs that are being offered. Uh, residents were educated about the many programs offered by the city, as I just mentioned, such as like the home dollars, uh, principal reduction for mortgage payments, our Dallas, uh, payment assistance programs and et cetera. Uh, we had some great speakers from Ax Housing and Neighbor Works who informed the residents and attendants about the great work they do for working and low-income residents, uh, especially in, in those who are also on Section 8. The key takeaways from the event for me were in, from word of mouth was that, uh, people were unaware that they could, that they could still get good quality help regardless of income, age, and/or credit, credit scores. I was impressed that individuals with a credit score below 500 could still become homeowners, which was pointed out by Deitra Kemp from Ax Housing. She also pointed out that residents on Section 8 could, could use those vouchers that they receive to become homeowners and make, and, and pay mortgages instead of only renting. Ax Housing is, also takes the time to work with individuals on getting their credit scores up to accept, to acceptable levels. I wanted to say thank you to Mark Perry from Community Action for working with me to organize this event. Thank you to my colleagues, President Duncan and Counselor Blakely, who were in, who were in attendance at the event and also showed support for residents, for the residents' well-being and spoke up as well. Um, where, I wrote this down, where was I? Uh, thank you to Ax Housing and Neighbor Works for stepping in to inform our residents of their many, uh, options to become homeowners. And thank you to Megan McBride, uh, from the EOC, uh, City of Beloit, who made, uh, residents aware that they could become, uh, they, they could jump on these EOC boards to also, that also deals with a lot of the housing concerns that they're concerned about. Um, and Allison Kriegmer, who was of, uh, from Legal Action, who came in to speak to residents about, uh, their rights as renters while also going, giving legal representation to residents as well. And, um, um, I would also like to say to cap this off that, uh, I'm not the only person that's concerned about the housing issue. I do know that my colleagues are concerned about this as well. And it's, it's definitely something that I hope we get together in the, in the near future. And a lot of people, the people, the turnout that we had, it was definitely people in there who looks up to us to find solutions for them. And that's what we got voted in to do. And even though the work could be hard, I'm pretty sure we'll get there someday. And I'm going to just leave it there.
Thank you, Counselor Terrell. Vice President Forbeck.
Well, I just want to say something sincerely to Eric. Um, I've had two phone calls and I'm the, I think I'm the counselor who gets the fewest notifications. I don't know why that is. I like to talk to people. Um, but, um, both of them read to me their tax bills and they were so thrilled with them. Um, so I just want to say thank you to our staff for, for informing us that we had to do this and planning for it. Um, and I'm, I'm very happy to see the public, um, really, really noticing this. So we're all set for the state of Wisconsin. We're all set for Beloit and, um, thanks. And so that's my report.
Thank you, Vice President Forbeck. Next, Counselor Blakely.
Thanks, Madam President. I was really awestruck by the Pathways to Home Ownership workshop last week. Did I say that right? Ownership workshop last week. It was really impressive, the amount of people who attended, the professionalism of the people who presented and all the information available. Um, my sincere compliments and gratitude to Counselor Terrell and also to Mark Perry. And I know President Duncan and I were both really excited to be there. So thank you so much. Lots of valuable material presented and a lot of interest expressed by residents.
Thank you, Counselor Blakely. Counselor Levy.
No report.
Thanks, Counselor Levy. I have quite a bit of a report, but I'll try to.
Talk fast.
Yeah, I'll talk fast. And I just want to say that, um, I may reiterate some of the same things that my fellow counselor said, but that's okay too. First, I want to thank our volunteers who were recognized earlier in the council meeting for their service and dedication to the city of Beloit. For your many contributions and time that you generously give, please know that each of you are truly appreciated. And if you volunteered and were unable to make it today, we acknowledge and thank you too. Now for my counselor activities. I attended a Wisconsin Housing Preservation Corporation Board of Directors Meeting and the Greater Beloit Economic Development Corporation Annual Board Meeting. That said, congratulations to Tim Oswald being elected GBDC Vice Chair representing Fairbanks Morris Defense, Mike Pockel, Treasurer representing Midwest Refrigerated Service, and I'm proud to represent Beloit Health System as Chair for the 2023 year. Also at the meeting, we recognized outgoing GBDC board members, Kevin Day from CCI, Diane Gustafson, First National Bank, Jim Egan, Kerry Ingredients, and Todd James from Blackhawk Bank. Special thanks to each of them for helping ensure that our community thrives. And thanks to, to the GBDC members for investing in our economy and workforce too. In addition, I joined Counselor Blakely in attending the Pathways to Home Ownership event hosted and organized by Counselor Marquis Terrell at Merrill Elementary School. This event was open to the entire public. It was shared that this project will, will help with preparedness and financial literacy skills as residents seek to secure housing. Also thanks to the partners that presented, the City of Beloit, Terry Downing and Megan McBride, Community Action Mark Perry, Ax Housing, Neighbor Works, Blackhawk Region Leah Casey, and Merrill Elementary School Principal Brandy Hurford and her staff. Together, we are building on our housing programs in Beloit by getting the information out. So we have great existing programs, but just getting the word out to specifically what those programs do. So whoever's there that was listening at the project could share it with other people that perhaps weren't at the event. Again, special thanks to all, including Counselor Terrell, for leading the charge. You really did a good job, Counselor Terrell, and I'm very proud of you. The event was well-attended and I'm grateful to the residents who came out. Next, I want to give, and I'll say this one slow. Next, I want to give heartfelt thanks to our entire City of Beloit staff for the hard work that they do throughout the entire year. You really need a standing ovation for this one. Our city staff have been rolling up their sleeves to help those in need during this holiday season, not just during their, doing their jobs. They've been leading efforts for the annual Shop with a Hero event with our police, our firefighters, um, nurses from, uh, joining collaboratively with the Beloit Health System, United Way, Salvation Army's Toy Drive, the American Red Cross, and the Beloit Bundle Up Project, to name a few. We have a wonderful, wonderful city team. Eric too, I can't leave you out, Eric, with all we've had to do with the taxes. I mean, I had to stop in with you. I did receive a phone call. And so I wanted to compare and say, why is this person lower? Why is this person higher? And so we want the public too to feel free to give Eric Miller a call if you should have a question. And I don't know if it's about the taxes. That may be a different department. But I know that the city has those answers. All you have to do is follow the Facebook page, go on the website. It's been really easy for me. I just go right on. And I'm, I'm not as tech savvy as some people. If I can do it, believe me, you can do it. And so let's continue. If I can do it, believe me, you can do it. And so let's continue to make Beloit shine. Do what we can to help one another, choose to spread more love, and take a moment to check in with others and just to ask if they're okay. It's just that simple. Are you okay? That said, I wish everyone a very safe and joyous Christmas and a Happy New Year. This ends my council report for this evening. Next, we'll go on to Item 11.
Item 11 is City Manager Presentation. 11A is Annual Economic Development Update.
And at this time, we have our Economic Development Director, Drew Pennington, to give us a review.
Good evening. We'll get our presentation up here in a sec. How much time you got? All right. Thank you. Well, good evening. We're here to run through our Annual Economic Development Update. And I'll try to be brief. I know you've got a full plate tonight. So without further ado, we have a new team in place. That's an update to start off with. Myself, as you know, I started in this role in July and on a temporary basis, on a permanent basis in October. Many of you have had a chance to meet Vicki Eggers, our Administrative Assistant, who has been a city employee for five years in police and planning and is doing a great job hitting the ground running with this position. So as a reminder, these positions are partially employed by the city and also GBEDC, the Greater Beloit Economic Development Corp. So, Councilor Levy, I put this in for you, right? So what is the GBDC? It's really a public-private partnership. It is an opportunity. It's focused on collaboration with our partners, and our partners meaning South Beloit, Clinton, Town of Beloit. So when developers are looking for property, they contact our office. We don't have to be limited by our borders. We can offer them opportunities in those partner jurisdictions. We are comprised of our larger companies primarily that are investors in GBDC, but also some small businesses as well. They invest in that corporation. We own land in the Gateway. We do other things to promote workforce development. But our strategic plan is pretty clear on what our focus should be, and it's right here. Business retention, expansion, and attraction to the Greater Beloit area. Housing promoting, the construction of additional housing units in the city and in our partner jurisdictions, and marketing and really presenting Beloit as a great place to live and to do business. So I'll jump right into the city update. We did, as President Duncan stated, we did our annual report for GBDC last week, and so that has a lot more of that element to it, and I'd be happy to share that if you'd like to see it. But I'll focus tonight on the City of Beloit activities. So you're looking at the Phoenix Investors Spec Building on Gateway Boulevard from the vantage point of G5 Brewing. So this is a large building that is in the final stages of at least its initial build-out. 500,000-square-foot building. As you know, the city provided the land for this development at a discount to incentivize this development. It's addressed at 1901 Gateway Boulevard, half a million square feet. It is a spec building, so they're actively looking for tenants to lease this building. The initial build-out of the shell of the building was a $19 million investment in Beloit. It is ready to go, and so they are actively seeking occupants for that facility, which is a very striking facility if you haven't seen it yet on Gateway Boulevard. Additional activity in the Gateway includes Chicago fittings, longtime Gateway occupant that is putting on a large addition to their facility on Colley Road. That's pictured in the lower left. That's a 51,000-square-foot building addition. Across Colley Road and further east is Spray Tech, which really rolled right from the initial build-out into Phase 2 with additional industrial dryers that they are building. Those are the taller portions of the building that you can see in the photograph on the lower right. That's a 60,000-square-foot addition to that facility, around $3 million in building, and significantly more than that in equipment. Those dryers are quite an investment in terms of capital. So that project will roll hopefully into additional phases and not stop at Phase 2. On Gateway Boulevard, North Star continues to expand. You all approved a PUD, a planned unit of development, for the campus that is shown there in the lower left. Specifically, building BE4 is under construction right now with additional phases planned. That's a 30,000-square-foot building with a material value of $12 million. Again, when you factor in the equipment value, it's going to be substantially higher than that. And they are discussing expansion further to the west as well on this facility. So they continue to evolve, and it's starting to feel like a real, actual campus environment. Medical facilities, we have a significant investment on Freeman Parkway in the city, the Ortho-Wisconsin Ambulatory Surgery Center. That's on the lower left. That's a $14 million building under construction right now that you can see, and it's nearly complete. About 30,000 square feet. We'll have a variety of operating rooms, exam rooms, waiting areas, and all of that, situated right on Turtle Creek in a very nice setting there. On the right, Beloit Health System invested substantially in the site around Beloit Clinic, and it made some serious upgrades there, if you haven't seen that, with lighting, landscaping. It's very walkable now, connects to the sidewalk on Prairie Avenue, for example. So significant improvements there in terms of medical facilities. Downtown, these are just two examples, probably the most prominent examples of renovations that have happened downtown. On the left is State Line Mental Health, which purchased the former law firm next door and has combined it with their building on East Grand Avenue and constructed an addition along the sidewalk to really merge those two facilities together into one. Very nice design on that building with some cool angles. That should be done within, you know, a month or so. On the right is Blue Collar Coffee, which relocated to this facility on West Grand Avenue, right along the river with a very nice facade and upgrade there with a lot more space. Residential activity, 20 single-family home permits issued, primarily in Park Meadow North and Eagles Ridge. And then the photograph is of the Wright &amp; Wagner's building, the second building. That's 83 rental units under construction. It looks different even now compared to when this photo was taken a week ago, as they finished the final floor. But that is a significant investment in downtown Beloit. Beloit Senior Living, that is on West, excuse me, West Hart Road behind the former ShopCo. They're putting a very nice addition onto that facility as well. And that facility will now have multiple kind of phases, so that residents who are in various stages of their journey don't have to relocate. They can move into areas of higher care right within the same facility. Other projects that wrapped up this year, the Beloit Mules on Wheels building on the right there, very nice facility on Maple, right across from the Boys and Girls Club, which officially opened in January of this year. Lower left, Quick Trip, opened obviously on Prairie and in Parkway there. That's a photo of their grand opening, which was a much warmer day than today. So lots of activity in terms of commercial construction as well. And then these are all projects that are in various stages of review coming soon. The photograph shows Family Services Next Steps, which was on your agenda earlier tonight. North Star, which I touched on. Beloit Precision there in the industrial park, and have plans for a 40,000-square-foot building. Morse Group out in the Gateway is proposing a major addition, and we're still hoping to see Scooter's Coffee break ground near the hospital on Prairie Avenue next to Pizza Hut. The city hosted a major celebration that many of you attended for the USS Beloit crew, and that was a fantastic kind of 48 hours of their time in Beloit. We walked around downtown, met business owners there, toured Fairbanks Morse, held an open house at the fire department and so forth. So we've got some photos of that night here, as well as some of the activities. The picture on the right is in the Ironrocks Hotel, where they went to dinner after the ceremony. And the lower left is some awards given to Fairbanks Morse Defense. And then right outside our building, our room here, the dedication of the painting by Mr. Hines on October 17th that is paired with the crest of the ship there. So another night celebrating the USS Beloit. Wanted to touch on a bunch of different updates that economic development has worked on with other departments. That would include some zoning reform, which again falls within that strategic plan of encouraging housing production. The Housing Flexibility Ordinance, allowing houses to be smaller than 1,000 square feet with a PUD was a significant step in the right direction, in my opinion, which you approved in September, and opening some new types of housing as options. As you know, we had several workshops on ARPA and TIF housing funding and how to utilize that funding to incentivize housing construction. I'm excited to see where that leads next year. I think there's going to be a lot of interest. Shout out to Eric as well for the 25% reduction in the mill rate, which is unheard of, and all of you as well for getting that approved, because that is exactly the kind of data that site selectors are asking for. I understand some folks went up, a lot went down. But that mill rate is really what is requested when businesses are considering our area. And then wanted to touch on some of the grants that were received as well, both for the 80 and 100 East Grand Project and casino-related work. Our department made a concerted effort to be responsive to smaller businesses during the second half of the year, and so we were really pushing these bounce-back grants. We know that several businesses were successful in getting them, and others are still waiting for theirs to be processed. So that's encouraging. That's a $10,000 grant from the state that we would support with letters of support. We've reestablished our regular meetings with our vision partners, including Visit Beloit, The Chamber, and the Downtown Business Association. We reopened our office for in-person meetings, walk-ins, calls, et cetera, and conducted a roughly 170 meetings with businesses and partners engaged in economic development. So briefly, in terms of DBA activities, DBA rolled into a, all of their regular activities were back in person, more or less. 11 new businesses downtown, substantial investment listed there, almost 1.8 million, really rolling into a lot of the regular activities that they were doing, facade grants, signed grants, et cetera. The events that are listed there are rebounding. They're not back to pre-COVID levels, but a lot of them are back to very healthy levels. For example, Oktoberfest, you know, more than 500 people, Street Dance, 1,700 people. That was a very successful night for them. Again, a lot of these are fundraisers for DBA, specifically to make all of their programming cash flow. So thank you to everyone that came out. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments you have. Otherwise, thank you for your time.
Were there any comments or questions? I did have one comment. I know that with GBDC, Catherine is also working at the library. What does she do, Drew? Can you talk a little bit about Catherine?
Catherine Jackson?
Yes.
So Catherine Jackson is a small business specialist through the Small Business Administration and Rock County, and she's available to meet with Beloit residents that are interested in starting up their own business.
Yes. And I just want to thank you, because people have been going to Catherine. And I also want to thank you for your help with the bounce-back grants. We gave, there was letters of intent. There was nothing hidden about that. That was on our website. That was on our Facebook page. But I just mentioned that to say there was a gentleman who called me and who I referred to you. You helped him, and he did the letter of intent, but he also just received that, an award letter that he would be getting that grant. So, and he's a small business person. So that, you know, it's important that we have our big businesses, but our small businesses are just as important to make our city viable. So I just want to put that out there, Drew. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Day.
Drew, I want to say, you know, thanks. You've just eased right into this position, and you've provided some great leadership to pick up GBDC and push it forward. So looking forward to '23 with you in the leadership role. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Blakely.
I just wanted to thank you, too, Drew. You've done a wonderful job stepping in as you did back in October. And what a beautifully positive report to have here at the end of our year. I look forward to many more positives with you in charge coming up in '23. Thanks again.
Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to our next item.
Item 12 is Reports from Boards and City Officers. 12A is Consideration of Resolution 2022-170, Approving the Termination of Tax Increment District Number 8.
Director Eric Miller will present for us at this time.
Hi, good evening. So we are looking at TIF District Number 8 tonight to close. That is what we refer to as our Casino TID out on Willowbrook Road. The TID was created in August of 1995 with a base value of $1.6 million. The current value is $23.5 million now for an increment of just about $22 million. All projects in TID 8 have been completed, and the debt service have been paid off. The Clerk-Treasurer will notify the Wisconsin DNR within 60 days of the passing of the resolution by state statute or by April 15th, whichever comes first. And the TID will not be certified for the 2023 year, which means that that will have an impact on our 2024 budget. We will collect the increment in 2023 for this year's certification. Those funds will be used to help fund the TID Housing Program, which we passed that TID Housing Extension earlier this year. That increment will be used for that program in 2023. And when we close this, it'll add 0.426%, basically like a net new construction number, to our levy to help increase the capacity in 2024's budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions on TID 8.
First, we'll take an action on that. May I please have a motion to approve this resolution?
So move.
Moved by Councilor Terrell. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Councilor Blakely. Are there any questions or discussion? I'll just reiterate, if I can, what you had in the staff report, that this adds approximately 0.426% to the allowable levy percentage that is applied to the city's tax levy. This will impact the 2024 budget by adding levy capacity and potentially reducing the tax rate. So I think that's important for our residents to know.
Yep.
So at this time, there is a motion and a second to approve this resolution. This requires a roll call vote. So, Madam Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Councilor Day. Councilor Terrell.
Aye.
Vice President Forbeck.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
Councilor Blakely.
Aye.
Councilor Levy. Motion carries 6-0.
Item 12B.
12B is Consideration of Resolution 2022-171, Approving the Termination of Tax Increment District Number 9.
Director Miller will present at this time.
Okay, thank you. So TID Number 9 is the TID that we refer to as our mall TID. This TID was created in July of 1998 with a $3.6 million base value. It currently has a $7.8 million value for an increment of $4.2 million. All projects have been completed, and debt service has been paid off. The advances that we had to our capital improvement fund has also been paid off, thanks to a TID amendment that we did a couple of years ago with our TID Number 11 to help share increment from that TID, to help pay off that advance. The Clerk-Treasurer will notify the DOR within 60 days or by April 15th, whichever comes first. This will not be certified on the '23 roll, same as the TID Number 8. So this will have an impact on our 2024 budget. We will be adding 0.082% to the levy capacity for the 2024 budget year. And same as TID Number 8, we should see some slight tax reduction at the closure of this TID as well.
Thank you, Eric. May I please have a motion to approve this resolution?
So move.
Moved by Councilor Terrell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Vice President Forbeck. Are there any questions or discussion at this time? I'll just read this one again. It adds approximately .082% to the allowable levy percentage that is applied to the city's tax levy. This will impact the 2024 budget by adding levy capacity and potentially reducing the tax rate. So, that said, there is a motion and a second to approve this resolution. This matter also requires a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Counselor Day.
Aye.
Counselor Terrell.
Aye.
Vice President Forbeck.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero. 12C is Consideration of Resolution 2022-172, Approving the Termination of Tax Increment District Number Eleven.
And our Director Eric Miller will present again to us.
So, this is TIF District Number 11. It's a small industrial TID located on the corner of Colley Road and... I forget the other road, but anyway, it's out there by Colley Road. Sager Lane, thank you. And the TID was created in October of 2001 at a $1.9 million base value. The current value is $11.5 million for an increment of $9.5 million. All projects have been completed, and all debt service has been paid off. This is the TIF district that we're actually sharing the revenue for with TID Number Nine in order to pay off those advances. The Clerk-Treasurer will notify the DOR within 60 days, or before April 15th, whichever comes first. This will not be on the 2023 roll, same as the other two, so we will not certify it in '23. This will have a budget impact in 2024. We will have approximately .186% added to the tax levy for 2023 budget year 2024.
Thank you, Eric. May I please have a motion to approve this resolution?
So move again.
Moved by Counselor Terrell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Forbeck. Are there any questions or discussion? And I won't cover it again, because I think you already talked about the .186% to the allowable levy percentage, so I won't go through that again. At this time, there is a motion and a second to approve this resolution, so this matter also requires a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Counselor Day.
Aye.
Counselor Terrell.
Aye.
Vice President Forbeck.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Carries six-zero. And finally, 12D, Consideration of Resolution 2022-173, Approving the Termination of Tax Increment District Number Thirteen.
Director Eric Miller will present.
Thank you. So, the final TID that we have tonight is TIF District Number Thirteen. This is a TIF district located in the Milwaukee Road Corridor. This TID was created in September of 2005 for a base value of $23.8 million. It currently has a value of $59.9 million for a total increment of just over $36 million. All TID 13 projects have been completed. All the debt service has been paid. We paid off the CDA lease revenue bonds early this year with some excess increment that we had in the TIF district. The Clerk-Treasurer will notify the DOR within 60 days of the resolution, or before April 15th, whichever comes first. This will not be certified for 2023, same as the other three. The increment collected in 2023 will be used for the TIF Housing Extension. We did all those extensions together earlier this year as well. The closure of this TID will add approximately .701% to the allowable levy in 2024's budget. And all of our, collectively, our TIF districts have been very successful in the city. We haven't had one that hasn't been so far. At the closure of these four, we will have one open TIF district left, which has been the least amount since I've been here, so we will definitely be in a position to look at adding future TIF districts. That was part of one of the strategic goals that we talked about earlier this year. So we're definitely primed and in position to be able to do that, especially after all four of these have now been closed.
Thank you, Eric. May I please have a motion to approve the resolution?
Move.
Moved by Counselor Terrell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Forbeck. Are there any questions or discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Counselor Blakely, go ahead.
Thank you, Eric, for all of your thorough work and your very organized presentations. Every time I hear the phrase "all debt service has been paid," I think I'm going to put it out on my chalkboard at home and look at that, because it makes me smile. Thank you so much for your very efficient and professional work.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
Thank you, thank you as well, Eric. Anything that saves our residents a couple of dollars is always a good thing.
Definitely.
You know, we need it, so thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
And I'm sure I echo that among my fellow counselors. We're all feeling the same way. But I'll just reiterate again, it adds approximately .701% to the allowable levy percentage that is applied to the city's tax levy, and this will, as you said, impact the 2024 budget by adding levy capacity and potentially reducing the tax rate. So that's always good news for us, for the city of Beloit and our residents. That said, at this time, there is a motion and a second to approve this resolution. This matter also requires a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Counselor Day. Counselor Terrell.
Aye.
Vice President Forbeck.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 12E, The City Council May Adjourn into Closed Session Pursuant to Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E, Wisconsin Statute for the Purpose of Deliberating or Negotiating the Purchasing of Public Properties, the Investing of Public Funds, or Conducting Other Specified Public Business Whenever Competitive or Bargaining Reasonings Require a Closed Session in Pursuant to Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G, Wisconsin Statute for the Purpose of Conferring with Legal Counsel for the Governmental Body Who is Rending Oral or Written Advice Concerning Strategy to be Adopted by the Body with Respect to Litigation in Which It Is or is Likely to Become Involved, namely to, excuse me, one, discuss possible settlement of tax claim filed by Woodman's Food Market, and two, discuss a potential collective bargaining agreement with the AFSCME Local 643 Transit Union. The City Council may thereafter reconvene into open session pursuant to Section 19.85 Sub 2, Wisconsin Statute for the Possible Action on the Matter or Matters Discussed in Closed Session.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn into closed session?
Absolutely.
Moved by Vice President Forbeck. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Terrell. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes. We will now go into closed session. ...